We don't want to defy the governor's order.
You're on.
You're on. Fantastic. All right, we're gonna open the Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, November 9th, 2020. Can we stand for a motion, please?
....................................................................................... All right.
Do you have a hard copy of the final agenda?
Yes, I have.
Uh, do we have anybody on the Zoom meeting?
There is no one yet.
No one yet, okay. So, we're gonna move on to the warrants. Jason, you wanna read those for us?
Sure. Make a motion to approve payroll warrant 21-19 in the amount of $175,222.32.
Second. The motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Uh, yeah, how about a, uh, an updated, uh, uh, final draft here with the approved, with the warrant numbers on them? Uh, I haven't got one.
Uh, email it.
Oh.
Just get Bill my other copy. I have another one, I don't know, I don't...
Billy, didn't you, you wanted a soft copy bill, right?
I just wanted a hard copy of the final agenda. Soft copy, uh, oh, I, I do, uh...
Can you share it, please?
Well, I don't have a hard copy of it, so...
Does everybody want?
No, 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 it's soft copy, it's fine by me, yep.
Okay. Me too. Oh, so he wants to...
There you go. Don't worry.
All right, any, uh, further discussion on payroll warrant 21-19? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I make a motion to approve bill warrant 21-19 in the amount of $383,574.13, which breaks down to town, $102,064.67. Water and sewer, $28,158.96. Payroll withholding, $6,992.1. Light bills, $62,361.12. Grants and revolving, $183,997.37.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, yep. Thank you, Jason. Uh, let's see, let's do the minutes real quick. We have the minutes from executive session, August 24th, 2020.
Uh, motion to accept those.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion on those?
Um, yeah, just, uh, a brief point. I think the minutes are getting just a bit too verbi. I think we should try to condense it. The minutes meant, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, just to be a synopsis to give the reader an idea of the discussion, what happened, the votes that might have been taken. This is almost, um, a word-for-word verbatim kind of thing. And then, uh, if we could just proofread some of these things, I didn't have a highlighter. But, um, if you, if you do a deep dive into some of these, it's not the words are misspelled. The words are all accurately spelled as far as I could see. It's just, uh, some of the words don't make sense in the context of the sentences. So if we could just double or proofread some of these as we go forward, it might save us some time.
Catherine, did you do August 24th, or does that predate you?
Maybe.
Well, I mean, anyways, going forward, this makes it easier for you, right? You don't have to be so precise, you can be more general. Um, okay, so, any further discussion on August 24th?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just bring your attention to page three, uh, third paragraph. Uh, Denise told the board that Kelly had applied to many positions and the board should focus on timing. Six months will be in the middle. Uh, the budget needs to be corrected. Uh, I'm missing a letter there. Budget, budge, B-U-D-G-E, I should have the T, you ought to be throwing in on the back of that. So we could, uh, I'll revise the motion to accept it with the, with that provision.
Those, uh, that's exactly the kind of, um, things I was referring to. The word budge is spelled correctly, but it's, you can't think sentence, it just doesn't make any sense.
Okay. All right, all those in favor?
Yeah.
Next up, we have minutes from executive session, September 28th, 2020.
I make a motion to accept, um, minutes from Monday, September 28th.
Your second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion on those?
Just the same comment, uh, as, as, as the other.
All right, all those in favor? Minutes from executive session, October 13th, 2020.
Make the motion to accept the minutes of executive session from October 13th, 2020, with the same stipulations as the others, just to better proofread.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Kathy, have a question.
Oh, Kathy?
Go ahead, Kathy. The 13th. I don't know. Did she say at the top of the minutes, Kathy?
No, she was present.
She, who were present at that one.
Right.
I can't hear anything she's saying, Catherine. Is she all set?
Oh, she, she was just saying it, but, um, she, she was raising her hand to approve it as well.
Oh. All right, so we all approved that? Is that what happened? Fantastic. Um, minutes from executive session, October 22nd, 2020.
Motion to approve minutes from executive session, October 22nd, 2020, with the same comments as the above.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Yep.
Go ahead.
So, these are the executive session that I won't be voting on anyway because I wasn't present, correct?
No.
No, you were there.
You were there.
So that's, okay, we're getting closer. The one I'm concerned about is the one I was not present for, so continue.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, just a point of order, Mr. Chairman. Uh, because we have somebody remotely, it should be a roll call vote.
I was just gonna say that. So Kathy, we're gonna roll call vote since you're remote?
Very good. Can you hear me?
I can. Kathy?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Mike, yes. Jason?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, minutes from executive session, October 28th, 2020.
Motion to approve minutes from executive session, October 28th, 2020, with same comments as above.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Yep.
Yes, I read those minutes that I missed because I had an appointment, and I think that those minutes properly belong in executive session, so I was wondering if it is possible to, for the members that were present to accept them and to release them into open session, so that if we have a follow-up meeting, uh, they're open. So I'm asking if you can accept them and release them into open, so that we're not executive anymore.
Kevin?
Mr. Chairman, that requires two separate motions, one to accept them, and then a separate motion to release them. Now, the board can take the vote to release minutes at any time. Different boards have different policies with respect to releasing executive session and blocks, but you could do it if the board feels this should have been open session. You can do it right now if you want. Are, are you talking the minutes of September 28th?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, October 28th.
October.
October, okay, because I'm looking at the wrong set.
October 22nd?
28th. So, from your point of view, it requires two separate motions.
I would suggest that, yes.
What would be the reason that we wait to release those?
Well, I haven't scanned these yet, um, so I can't tell you offhand.
That's fine. I just, I just wanna know what the reasons would be for and what the reasons would be against.
I'm, I'm sorry, I was just scanning those. I apologize.
I just would like to know what the reasons would be for releasing them early, or as opposed to not releasing them early.
Typically, the reason you'd release them, and I think what Kathy's saying, if I'm understanding her correctly, is that these, this should not have been an executive session to begin with, and it should have been, I mean, it should not have been, all right, it shouldn't have been an executive session to begin with, and the remedy, if that's the case, is to release them.
Mm-hmm.
Um, which cures the defect, frankly. On the other hand, if you don't, and they stay in executive session and they should be released, um, somebody can report that to the Attorney General's office and, you know, then lots of unfun things happen.
I personally don't care either way, whether they can release...
So if I could just take a second to scan these?
Yeah, go ahead.
Because I, I could, I think, give you some advice quickly.
No, take your time.
Nothing changed except for the... Do this one, right?
Yes.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you very much.
So, this looks like, um, a meeting between the board and the, um, Sam Jocelyn, the Groveland Inspector, Building Inspector?
Yes.
Um, where he had a discussion with the board about, um, comparable wages in another community and his own pay here.
Can I just interrupt for a minute? What's the difference if you're gonna read notes, the executive may understand if we just release them?
Well, the reason that you don't release executive session minutes is if the reason for which you first placed them into executive session, if the reason were to be defeated by the release of the minutes, then you do not release them. Example.
I understand that, but if you're gonna read the minutes, then it kind of defeats the issue whether we're going to release them or not. You're releasing them now.
Well, I'm not gonna read them aloud.
You are, I think.
No, I just started to scan.
He's just scanning them.
Okay.
Oh, no, I wasn't intending to read them aloud, no. Just looking at it quickly, it looks like it was a budget discussion, and I'm just gonna give you my first blush impression. If it's accurate what I say, then I think I can provide you with a, with a recommendation. So if it's the case that this was a discussion with a non-union employee concerning comparable wage data that he had looked at from other communities, um, and he wanted to have a conversation with the board about that comparable wage data, that would not be a reason for executive session. The clause that gets commonly misinterpreted is, is, um, negotiations for contract discussions with non-union personnel.
Mm-hmm.
So for instance, the night you went into executive session to discuss my contract is perfectly legitimate, and that's, and you should do that in executive session, because you might say, "Well, we'll talk to him and we'll negotiate up this high on salary, but no higher, but we'll make an opening offer of this." And that's common in collective bargaining, whether it's with a personal services contract with non-union or union. So you wouldn't want me to know, coming into that negotiation, what your top of the hourly rate would be, because you'd wanna negotiate the best deal you could get for the top. So you wouldn't release those minutes. Now, the minute the contract was signed with me, then the reason for conducting the executive session no longer exists, and you would then release the minutes. And if you didn't, somebody requested them, and you didn't release them, then you'd be in violation. And if somebody further, you know, as a practical matter, if somebody is in violation of the open meeting law, there's no real penalty unless somebody files a complaint with the AG, and then the AG will take it under advisement. And then if you're in violation, they'll direct you to correct the defect by, uh, releasing the minutes. If you have a discussion in executive session, which should not have been an executive session to begin with because of a misinterpretation of that clause, which by the way is very common, then the cure to that is to release them, realize the mistake, release the minutes, and then no, any complaint that's issued after that is filed by the AG, you know, basically say, "Hey, we made a mistake, we fixed it, no problem," and that's the end of that. So, if it's the case, does this, does this gentleman, the inspector, have a contract with the town?
No.
Okay, then that's pretty much a slam dunk. Absent a contract, having a discussion in executive session for contract negotiations with non-union personnel, on its face, it doesn't exist because you don't have a contract.
But it doesn't say non-contractural personnel, it says non-union person.
No, so if you were gonna have a conversation with a non-union person without a contract about their comparable wages, excuse me, I've been doing a lot of talking today, and you were just gonna have a conversation with them about, "Hey, I found these comparable wages in other communities, I'd like, I think I need to get paid more money, et cetera." That has to be in a public session. That cannot be in executive session. But, if you're gonna, you've got a non-union person with a contract that's about to expire, and you're negotiating with them for a new contract, and you wanna have an executive session to talk about what you are and are not willing to do, that would be perfectly appropriate. So, I apologize, Mr. Chairman, I just did a quick scan of these minutes. It looks like a non-union employee presented you with facts and figures from another town. He didn't have a contract to begin with. Unless you were considering giving him one, if this is just kind of a vanilla discussion about his wages, not appropriate for executive session. And I, without having read it thoroughly, but you all know what the discussion was, so if that helps you to make a decision, great. If not, I'd be more than happy to read him in detail and come back at the next minute.
My point of view, either way is fine with me. I don't have a preference either way, but I will tell you that I did seek advice, and I was directed that I could have an executive session.
Mm-hmm.
So, if this makes everybody happy, then so be it. Either way, it doesn't matter to me.
Sometimes these things turn on small points. When I'm not sure, I always call the AG's office and I just ask, and they, they're very forthcoming, um, in telling you, and they, frankly, they err on the side of doing it in public, and sometimes...
Yeah, I would err on the side of doing it in private, because of, you'd never know what the, um, points of the conversation are gonna turn to, so, but if that's my mistake, then so be it.
Sometimes you scratch your head when you get their, their suggestion, but my way of doing business over the many, many years of dealing with that law is I always take their suggestion, because it's a whole lot better to do what they say, even if it feels odd, than it is to get in their crosshairs for doing a violation, because they can make that most unpleasant, so...
Okay.
And particularly, by the way, if they tell you to do it a certain way, you ignore it, and then they get a complaint, oh yeah, that can be, that can be really problematic.
Well, we don't wanna have anyone complain about it, so...
Yeah, that, that's my on-the-fly impression, um, but again, it's, it's a quick on-the-fly looking at these.
Yep. So we have to do a two-pronged approach on this now. We have to approve it, and then we have to then approve to release them? Is that what we're doing?
Right now, you have one motion on the floor, and that's to approve the minutes.
This is taking longer than it should. All right, so, we have a motion, I think we have a second.
Yes.
Let's roll call, so we can have that recorded, uh, for approval. Ed?
Um, I have to abstain, I wasn't at the meeting.
Right there, yep. Jason?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
Yeah, yes.
Bill, yes. Kathy?
She has to abstain, she wasn't there either.
I abstained, and I wasn't there.
Right, but she has to be on the record of abstaining.
Yeah.
Now, we have to get a motion to release those, uh, minutes.
I'll make a motion to release those minutes.
Thank you, Jason.
Second.
Great, we have a motion and a second. We're gonna roll call to release the minutes. Ed?
Uh, I'll, I'll abstain on that one also.
Got it. Jason?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Bill?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
All right, uh, we have the appointment of Amy Carrier from Groveland to emergency temporary custodian of Town Hall for COVID cleaning effective November 4th, 2020, at $18 an hour.
I move we appoint, oh, yes.
I wanted to apologize to the board, because, um, I actually had this person stop working last week on, I think it was Wednesday night, Thursday, Wednesday after the election.
Yep.
Because, as you all know, our regular employee for this, um, um, had a potential exposure, and we had to, um, let him leave work. Let him, we had to have him leave work, until we could resolve that. So we were, through the very good graces of the board, um, I believe Mike and Catherine, and I don't know if any of the other board members were there, and I guess some of the poll workers, took care, Wednes, uh, Tuesday night after the election of sanitizing for COVID purposes, the, the big meeting room, and some other places as well. And, uh, commendations to all those people who did that. It was extraordinary and very nice. However, there's great liability associated with, with COVID cleaning and whatnot, as you can imagine, so you really gotta have somebody doing it who's compensated and et cetera. Um, it wasn't a perfect solution. I first tried, um, to get one of our existing employees to do it, they couldn't do it. I was then told that there had been this person who does cleaning and had been interviewed apparently before and would have been hired, but she didn't have, um...
She didn't have the insurance requirement at the time, would need...
Right, so I suggested, well, hire as a temporary, uh, emergency employee, have her do the work. She did it, she did a great job by all accounts. I just wanted to tell the board, I'm not in any way trying to usurp your authority in hiring people. It was just the circumstances. I did call the chairman, let him know, you know, um, what I was doing, and he said, "Yep, that's fine, get it done." So I just wanted you folks to know, I'm not, didn't mean to usurp your authority, so you're actually doing this retroactively. Steve is now back to work, um, and cleared and in good health, so, um, again, didn't wanna create any misimpressions, but it was a bit of a dire circumstance, so ordinarily, you won't see me doing that.
Hey, as long as stuff gets done, I don't care who does it. So, we're, so we're gonna...
I just didn't wanna give you the impression, the first week I'm here, I go trampling on the board's authority, not the way I am.
I'm happy you're taking some of the stuff off of my plate, so that...
Okay, thanks.
Feel free, you're not stepping on any of my toes. Um, so, we were gonna appoint her on the 4th, today is now the 9th, are we gonna unappoint her now?
No, you can retroactively appoint her, um, you know, to, to the date that she actually started work, and then, I wouldn't release it yet, because I had a conversation with Steve today, and I said, "What's the backup to you?" And he said...
He doesn't have one.
"There is none." So I would suggest you just keep her on the payroll for now, until I've got time to really figure out a good backup plan. This might be it. But there might, you know, one of the ideas was to get a custodian from the school department on loan, available at the moment we need it. Um, that's, that's another good idea, so I will get back to the board with a suggestion for how to fix this permanently. In the meantime, I keep her here in case something happens and we need her again.
Okay. Someone might wanna make a motion on that?
So I'll make a motion that we appoint, uh, Amy Carrier of Groveland to emergency temporary custodian of Town Hall for COVID cleaning effective November 4th, 2020, at a rate of $18 an hour, and to be effective as long as such time is needed.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, I have a question for Kevin.
Sure.
Um, our, Steve is more than just a person who cleans, he also is in charge of maintenance of the village, with respect to heating and ventilation and other safety issues, so my concern would be that I think it's a good idea to start looking around for what should be our real backup plan, um, because we're gonna need that, so we might need two prominent folks or something, um, I would like to see that included in what you look at. I also would like to see included, um, as far as liability insurance and quarry checks. Now, as we hire people, we're, we're making sure that we're crossing the Ts and downing the As.
Sure, if this, just so the board's clear, this person was hired to do strictly the daily COVID cleaning, that was it. They didn't do any of the other normal duties that Steve does, and that was because the law requires it to get done, and we didn't have anybody else to do it. I was specifically asked about quarry. In this case, quarry only provides, uh, criminal violations that are related to the job at hand, so I, we, I couldn't imagine what the quarry, um, could have revealed that would have convinced us not to do this, because it likely is not, we wouldn't have gotten anything back.
I'm not challenging your decision, your immediate decision at all, I'm just saying as you look forward.
Oh, sure, absolutely, yep.
Yeah, just, yeah, no, I mean, I completely understand why you had to do what you had to do, because I mean, public safety above all else.
Yep.
So absolutely, I have no problem with that.
Sure, going forward, quarry will be a concern, yes. That's why using the janitor from the school department would be ideal, because they've already been quarried to be around kids, and that's a, probably a way higher standard than we need, so, yes, absolutely.
All right, let's roll call. Ed?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Bill?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Okay, so moving on to discussion and possible votes, sorry we kept you guys, if I knew it was gonna take that long, I would've started with, with you. Um, COVID discussion, what do we have for an update? I know there's new numbers out, I saw new...
New numbers, new, two new cases today, positive cases, um, some contacts came in today, so, you know, things are cranking up, but the other day, we had 2,200 in the state, positive cases, or, you know, positive cases, actually. So, the governor, within the last couple days, actually went on TV and he made some announcements, I don't know if you all heard them or not, but, um, the groups, whether they're public or private, in a home, um, in a meeting place, have to be 10 inside, no more than 10, outside 25, so those are significant changes. And, um, a five-year-old and up has to wear a mask. They didn't say anything about instituting, you know, how this was gonna be maintained in the future, you know, if there was gonna be some sort of, uh, fine put in or whatever. They, they didn't go that far. And then, um, you know, there's a, a time limit as far as when you can be out, and, um, I don't know if it was 9:00 or...
It was 10:00.
10:00.
Was it 10:00?
10:00 AM to 5:00 AM.
I think it's the restaurants need to close by 9:30, takeout only after that.
That, that was it, yeah. So they're clamping down, and I think, you know, we have to really encourage people to get back into, you know, keeping their guard up, wearing masks, keeping away from crowds, social distancing, and, um, you know, do all these things that we have to do to stay safe. And, um, you know, I think we've done a really good job here in Groveland in the past, and, um, you know, the, the numbers have shown, but, like I said, they're, they're clicking up, so we really have to pay attention. And so, right now, we're at 69 cases, and fortunately, the state, I guess that they're following CDC with doing this, um, has said that, um, they are changing the, the numbers on how they're figuring out colors, 'cause we thought we were gonna go into yellow, you know, for this past two weeks, and we're still in gray, because they changed the numbers and how they're doing it.
Changed the numbers based on...
Based on population. Based on population.
Right, cases, well, it was like cases per 100,000 or...
Right.
But we don't have anywhere remotely close to 100,000, so we're like 8,300 people or whatever the number is. So if you divide that by 69, you get, what, .008% or something?
It, it's really helped us a lot.
Right.
By doing this.
So that we should go back down to gray, is that...
We're, we're, we're still gray. We, we never hit yellow, okay?
We did hit yellow, didn't we hit yellow?
We, we hit yellow once, about, what was it, three weeks ago?
Right.
Four weeks ago. Um, but we were going into yellow again for this last two weeks, but we didn't, because they changed the metrics.
I mean, you can change the metrics, it still doesn't mean it's changing the situation, right? Just because you changed the way you view the numbers, it doesn't change the situation. But, I get, I get what you're saying, we were in yellow once, we came out of it because our cases went down, and now we were going to go back...
But, you know, as I've been saying right along, you know, the way they were figuring out these colors didn't really give us much wiggle room.
Right.
It really didn't, you know, we had like seven cases and we were yellow, or five cases, over five cases, so...
So do you know how, how many active we have?
So, do you know how how many active we have right now?
There are-
Five, four?
No.
No, no, it's more than that, so we've got-
Seven.
Nine people on quarantine. And uh there's three in one house. Okay, so there's seven houses on quarantine. And I got several calls today, one was from a contact tracer in Boston on someone and um, you know, there's contacts coming in all the time.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'm there's a lot of them. There's a lot. But most of them are coming back negative, fortunately.
Did you have anything to add to that?
Well, it just brings us to the next thing, um I think you have in your packet letter from the CARES Act about the money that we have left to spend. We they submitted for twenty thousand for the board of health staffing needs, for the contact tracer, for our money for for the public health nurses, for the um, we call it Joe's, uh for the health agent and for Lori too, and all we are really getting is five thousand dollars is by the CARES Act, 'cause fifteen thousand is from FEMA. But FEMA is not necessarily gonna be covering it and I'm not sure if five thousand dollars is gonna get us through till the end of the year.
Did they say why FEMA's not covering it?
Um just that saying that they're, from according to Ellen, says FEMA's pushing back and not covering a lot of of what they originally said they were going to, so there's a chance that it won't be covered and the town might have to put the bill for that fifteen thousand. I know we're gonna need it, but we might and then, and what happens after December thirty-first, COVID's not going away, we're gonna still need additional, the additional hours that we have now. So.
And what what's the other email here about um you have to hire a separate person to enter the information into Maven?
Well, that would be the contact tracer, that would be-
Oh, so that, once we get the contact tracer, that that, I was wondering why we had to have a separate person, but that's that's because we have to have that contact tracer that's doing all that.
Right.
Okay.
And she's supposed to be having Maven training um next Monday.
Okay. So, you're saying we may need to find fifteen thousand dollars sometime soon?
Possibly.
So, I guess try to be prepared for it, is that what you're saying? Okay.
I mean, could be more than that, I'm just saying, as we're going into next year, just make sure it's in the budgets that we're I need some more money.
All right, um Ed, you have any questions?
Uh, no.
Jason?
No.
Bill?
Um, yeah, how many active cases did you say we currently have on?
Right now, there's nine.
Nine? And what what's the gray, I thought there was green, yellow and red, there's gray?
Yeah, there's gray-
Gray, yellow.
Yellow, green and red.
Gray's a starting point.
And gray means?
Normal-ish.
Gray means like, we're we're good.
Um, quick question, because I I I've heard a lot of debate about it, herd immunity, what are your feelings on that? You're shaking your head.
I really can't comment on that.
Yeah, I'm not sure about it either, I don't, it's not something I'm gonna publicly comment, that's just-
Not proven, yeah.
Um, having known some reading on the subject, I can only offer you that. Herd immunity occurs when enough people in a given population have either contracted or been exposed to the disease enough to develop antibodies and prevent CERM conversion. So, um that's generally held to be around sixty percent of that given population. If you look at Massachusetts, we're vastly short of that. If you look at the United States, um there's been more, but still vastly short. You're talking, in order to reach that number, you're talking about roughly um probably around two hundred-
About a hundred and eighty million, you're rough, rough math.
Yeah, around two hundred million Americans contracting the disease and we're not there yet. Vaccin, vaccines are the hope, because-
And even though we're currently ninety-six percent of the population that contracts, it will recover with about too many um problems. Four percent roughly would perish, so that that would equate to about seven point two million people, so we don't wanna go there, right? That's just kind of off the charts, right?
That's for sure, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, that's why the vaccine takes the takes the place, if you will.
Yeah, let's keep our fingers crossed if Pfizer has that that cure today.
The only other thing I was gonna say is um even if someone had COVID, there's this, there was a study out that after after three months, they can still get it again, I mean, they have their immunity, but only for a short period of time, so.
Right. Um masks, I know this is a big, the big topic, the minute you walked in here, masks and the new uh orders.
The governor mandated it.
And the governor mandated, but i i I think it goes beyond that. Uh studies, some studies have said that certain people with certain blood type O kind of resistant to it for some reason, they have a lower incidence.
Or they get it less, a less severe strain of it.
And there's a lot of people that are running around that are completely asymptomatic that have it. So, I choose to wear the mask so as not to infect anyone else, because I don't know if I'm one of those special people that happen to be asymptomatic, that I I have it, but I don't know I have it. So, out of respect and consideration to everyone I come into contact with, because I don't know if I'm one of those special people, it's probably just a good idea to wear a mask for everyone else's safety, would you say so? Would you agree with that statement?
Yeah, definitely, I mean, I think so. I think it's a good thing.
Okay, and just one last point on on COVID, good things, i i I try to find a good spot in everything I I I do, and if there's one good spot in COVID that I found, it's during the last eight months, it's really made me appreciate the family, the friends and the loved ones I have around me much, much more than I ever have before in my life. And I think if there's one positive that can come out of that, if you can all share that with me, I think that's, that's one thing we can probably all share, that we're all a little bit closer to everyone we love just because of this. And I thank you again for all the service, everything you've done through these eight months, it's been extremely difficult, I I can't even imagine how difficult it's been on you, but I just wanna thank you for all the effort you've put into this to try and keep all the citizens in Groveland here as safe as possible, appreciate it. Thank you.
Kathy?
Um, yeah, I just had a couple of things to say. First of all, I was glad to see um a member of the board of selectmen thanking the board of health. I was blindsided the last couple of meetings by statements that criticized our health employee and criticized our board of health. I want to apologize to the employee and to our board of health. And I want all the citizens of Groveland to understand that we probably have the most underfunded, understaffed board of health in the area. Prior to COVID, our board of health nurse was only authorized to work six hours per week. Now with COVID, she's authorized to work twelve hours per week, I'm sure she works more hours beyond that. There's a lot of questions with COVID, some of them are health-related and some of them are more to do with the metrics. I don't expect our board of health to be an instant statistics expert. Being a statistics person myself, I understand that one of the reasons the governor changed the metrics is to prevent schools from closing, just because something goes wrong. They're trying to keep the students in the education, and I feel that that is an important cause. Can you all hear me?
Yes, you can.
Okay, 'cause I understand that some people cannot. So, my second concern is that the access to the database containing our confidential town information regarding residents who have tested positive for COVID has been granted to an individual hired by the Kentucky district. I know what the job of this person is, I support it wholeheartedly, however, I'm concerned about the access and liability through HIPAA in addition to other laws. In addition to the best of my knowledge, this type of access was not granted to the other regional school districts, who also have students in our town. So, my concern and my question is more for the town attorney to review this situation and to really um recommend to our board of health whether or not this database where the confidential information regarding residents who have positive tested positive for COVID should be given out to an individual who is not on staff for our town board of health. My reading of everything at the state level refers to people hired by the town's board of health having access to the database, and I think that's probably for a good reason. So, I don't really expect an answer on this at this moment in time, but I would ask if the board of selectmen, my board members, would support my request to have Kevin perhaps consult with town council on the issue and consult with our board of health, now that we have two members on it, and make a decision going forward. That's my request.
Yeah, um just uh if I'm understanding it correctly, Kathy's saying that there was the condition um of certain people who appeared on the Maven list, I guess, is what it's what it's called? Which was released to somebody um-
Professional nurse.
Okay.
Who was bound by HIPAA herself.
Okay, so here's the deal with HIPAA. If you are a caregiver of the person in question, and that's very clear, caregiver, then you're automatically covered without a um without a um authorization to access PHI, Protected Health Information, 'cause you're a caregiver, so you have to be able to get it. If you are not in the chair, in the chain of care for that person, then in order to possess that information, you must have permission of the person to access what's called PHI, Protected Health Information. I know, I know Deb deals with this every day as a nurse and probably Claire as well as is a nurse, so if you're providing care, you don't need permission, 'cause you can't provide care without knowing what the, so, I'm a paramedic, I bring a patient in, I hand the record to Deb as the nurse at the facility, she automatically has permission, nobody signed an authorization form. But if I, I'm a statistician at the hospital and I wanna release information to somebody, in order for me to put eyes on that information, I've gotta have these in associates, um we have these a couple of different designations, which could have a designation to be allowed to um access PHI. I don't know if that's responsive to Kathy's question, but I will say that if that is responsive, I don't know that you need to necessarily um contact town council, because town council's gonna give you the same answer, guaranteed. I do, I deal with this every day and I'm sure you both do as well, and the answer's crystal clear, it's absolutely crystal clear. Unfortunately, if there was a violation, there is no way to remedy it, except to get the information back uh from whoever it was given to. So, if I'm misunderstanding the question, then please correct me and then I'll go on and do a more thorough review of it.
Kevin, actually, um you've addressed it completely exactly correctly. So, in other words, our board of health is charged with the care of our residents who are COVID. So, they would be allowed to be, a person hired by our board of health would be given access to the database to um take care of positive COVID cases and find, follow everything.
Yes, under under both the CARES Act.
Board of health would need permission from individual people, and that's not gonna happen, so the information has to flow from our board of health to an outside party.
Yes, the board of health has a, has access to the information under both HIPAA, the CARES Act, I should say both, I said all, HIPAA, the CARES Act and Mass General Act, chapter one eleven, they've got access to, because of all three of those sources that give them permission to do it. But they can't release it to anybody else without the people in question all signing approval for it to go to someone else. It's as simple as that.
I don't think that's what Anita told us last, last time she was here, right?
Board of health can release-
I don't think that's what Anita told us when she was here, right?
No, that access to Maven could be granted um by representatives of board of health, but I I guess I'm I'm a little confused over um this has to do with the school district?
It does.
It does, because we have a regional school district that affects three towns?
Correct.
And this, and the nurse at this, at the school district is is the one involved, is the person that, I'm not understanding the question, I guess, I don't-
The nurse at the school may, and I wanna bright line, may, have access also.
To Maven.
May. The board of health can release data with the names taken out, because now you're not violating HIPAA. And I get information like that all the time in my other life as a healthcare consultant. But it's absolutely, if the name is on it and the medical, it's a violation of HIPAA if I release a list of employees' names and what health plan they're on. It's got nothing to do with their healthcare status, but that alone has been held as a violation of HIPAA. It's pretty uh, it's a pretty intense law. So, um if the person at the regional school is a person who has access through operation of law, then they could get the information, but I I don't know what the case is, I don't know. And I don't know exactly what happened, I'm trying to listen and be helpful at the same time.
I I I know we had a a an issue with communication where a child could reasonably be uh living in one town, uh children in one household from one town could reasonably be in three different schools within the district and cross different district lines. And I think that's, correct me if I'm wrong, that's where the breakdown in communication was, we talked about a couple of weeks ago with
Right.
Kind of understanding that dynamic between the schools and-
Um if I could just clarify, 'cause it's my discussion, that what I'm talking about is that we have students in our town who attend three different regional school districts, North Shore Tech, Whittier Tech, or Kentucky district. So, access to our residents' confidential database that contains their health information and whether or not they have tested positive for COVID will include people who have nothing to do with any of these districts, will include students who attend North Shore Tech, will include students potentially who attend Whittier, will include students who attend a Kentucky district, it's not a singular um school district, and so I feel that perhaps, if I'm understanding the current situation correctly, access to the database for the residents of the town of Groveland, in this case to our town residents, access has been given to a party outside of our town or county.
Can we vote on this? Can we vote on this last meeting?
State law HIPAA, I mean, Kevin knows more about it than I do, obviously with his years of experience. He explained it quite well, that this is a, this is a pretty big law and these are pretty uh could be very expensive judgments if-
Hold on one second. Hold on one second, Deb, didn't we talk about this at the last meeting, that you wanted or you were okay?
Well, I didn't want, she wanted, this person-
But we needed someone to do this, right?
But I know that she, but I'm uncomfortable with it and I understand where Kathy's coming with that, and I think Claire's uncomfortable with it too, because there's a lot of data on there that isn't necessarily, you know, they feel like they're not getting the met, the information quick enough, but I will tell you that somebody tested positive or went and got tested last week, it didn't come up on Maven. Did it finally come up today? But they already know, but it didn't come up on Maven. Um but the whole issue is they're trying to get things before it hits Maven, that they're not getting it, they don't feel they're getting it quick enough to make a decision about this school.
Right.
But um I, I'm not comfortable with the person having access, honestly, because there's other things that have been brought up that have nothing to do with, there's more going on, I guess, Mike, that needs to be, that shouldn't be discussed.
Yeah, because I have no idea what you're talking about with this thing, so-
I know, I know, and I can't go into it all right now, but-
No, but I mean, I would like to, hold on, Kevin, I'd like to understand what we're talking about now, because at the last meeting, the whole board was on board with moving forward with this decision, including the board of health. Now this has changed, but I wanna make sure that the data and the conversation is still happening with the school, that we're just not gonna stop and not have the conversation
No, we're talking, but there's things that are just happening behind the scenes that you don't know about that, I just don't think that, and I think Claire's on this too, that they shouldn't have access to the Maven, 'cause if, once we have this other person that's gonna do the contact tracing and be our main person, it really just needs to be her and- it really just needs to be her and Claire who will have access to our town of Groveland.
The nurse that we're going to contract with? Yeah, that's what we talked about at the last meeting. That's what we're trying to get to.
But the school district, which Kathy's talking about, that the PRSD, you know, the Kentucky Regional School District, they want that nurse to also have access to Maven, so they can see what's going on.
Well, they want that information because they weren't getting anything. So they're asking to have help from the town to get information so they can make a reasonable assessment on what they need to do with the school. Before, they were only getting two-thirds of the information. They weren't getting anything from Groveland. So that's why they asked for help. So if you're telling me that contracting with a nurse is going to get you comfortable with the information, going to be appointed by you, is the way to fix this, then that's fine. I just don't want to go backwards, because part of the conversation we had the last two weeks was to make sure that we move forward with this, correct? Kevin?
No, I think you just answered my question. So there's three people here. There's Claire. There's a new person to be identified who the board has authorized to have access to Maven for community tracing purposes. And then there's a third person over at the school who was given access somehow by somebody. So, it is unlikely that the person over at the school who's given, is allowed to do that. The state's got some very, very rigid requirements on who can access Maven, and generally it's one person in the town. Do you have access? Okay, that's usually the person. And nobody else gets it, because it's tons of Protected Health information. And you think about it for a minute, you're not a caregiver, but you've got to have access. So extraordinary things are happening right now that would never happen under the way HIPAA was originally written.
Normal circumstances.
Right. So, another example, if you're going to have a community tracer, you're probably going to have to get permission from the state for her to get a password to get into Maven.
Right.
And the state isn't going to give that password unless they say, okay, who are you? What are you doing? Where's your appointment letter? Yep, here's your password, you can get into Maven.
And we're already working on that with her and...
I would presume, as I see the board's vote, the letter's in your packet here. Now, I don't know who this third person is, but I do know this. Unless they've got appropriate authority from the local Board of Health and the state approves it, they cannot get a password to get into Maven. The state will decide that, not us, because if that person has a legitimate reason to be in there, then the state's going to give them a password.
Hold that thought. Isn't that what we talked about with the nurse from West Newbury? Granting her that access because we were going to appoint her for that temporary position until we contracted with a full-time nurse?
Except she's not our, I mean, she's helping out. That's the other thing. We don't know her full extent of what her position is with the Kentucky Regional School District, because she has asked for, she was going to submit a statement, I mean, a bill to us, which we don't have money to pay for that at the moment. And we think she's covered under the Kentucky Regional School District contract that she signed. We don't know that. I need to see, we need to talk to Dr. Bartholomew about that and see what the scope of her employment is. Because she said she would help, but she needs to be paid and in our budget.
Where the school district offices are located in West Newbury, is it possible that the West Newbury Board of Health hired her? We really...
She works for the West Newbury, so she works for the West Newbury Board of Health, but the school district hired her as a collaborator with the three, for the district, for the towns with Merrimack, West Newbury, and Groveland. So she would know what was going on, because he wanted to know quick enough to know, make decisions as far as the school.
So did the West Newbury Board of Health grant her access to Maven?
Well, she works, she's a public health nurse for West Newbury.
She has access to West Newbury Maven?
She has access, because she's a public health nurse for them, but she's also a collaborator.
The regional school nurse.
Regional, that he hired her for, but I don't know the extent and...
The file is password protected and it's protected by community. So for instance, Claire can get into, presumably having a password, can get into the Maven file for Groveland. She can't get into the Maven file for the city of Boston. So if this person that you're discussing at the school is the health agent for West Newbury, then she has the password to get into West Newbury's COVID cases and all related info. Not necessarily Groveland's or...
Right, but she wanted Groveland's. We did give access, but we're really, we want to pull that back, is what I'm saying.
As long as you can get somebody to do it, I don't care who does it. My concern is that we're going to pull it back and then we're going to be back to four months ago where it's not getting done. That's what I want to make sure that we, because we had milestones that we wanted to keep in place, right? We said, what's going to happen in two weeks? You know, what are we looking for as far as the report from the Board of Health and access to Maven and the contact tracing and the collaboration with the other towns? We want to make sure that that keeps going forward, right? Not stagnant or going backwards. So as long as you're telling me that we're going to pull that back from the West Newbury nurse because you have some concerns now, and you're going to try and move forward with this $5,000 that we think we have from CARES, what we can get from FEMA, $15,000, whether we're going to get that or not, or otherwise the town's got to find a way to pay for it, that that's the way we're going to go. That's correct now?
And we're going to hire that other person we talked about. We interviewed her last Monday and we're going to, we have to figure out what we're paying her. That's the other thing we need to, we don't know hourly what to pay her either.
That's the contact tracer?
Yeah.
I thought we discussed that with Anita, somewhere $35 or $40, whatever it was.
No, it's more than that. They're getting between $50, $50 to $60 now.
That's what I was going to say, 55 or 50.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's up there. She also said she wouldn't need 20 hours. You were at that interview. She wouldn't need 20 hours.
I think we suggested 20 hours because this was going to go forward and not stop.
Right, she said she would not need a full 20 hours.
And if I sound a bit defensive, I am, because I think two weeks ago, four weeks ago, six weeks ago, we had a very open conversation about what needed to get done and everybody agreed on it. And now I'm hearing that you're in violation of everything under the sun.
Well, no, I mean, it's...
I'd like to speak, Mr. Chairman, please.
I'm not done speaking. Hold on one second, right?
No, but this is because this is HIPAA and it wasn't something I had thought about prior to, but I am concerned that some access could be... It's our town, so I want to, go ahead Kathy. I really think that we need to step back on that one.
So, I just want to make sure I understand. Over the last couple of weeks, you've developed concerns over the temporary process that we agreed to move forward with, and you want to reel that back in order to step forward, a couple of steps with the new contracted nurse?
Yeah, and we're doing okay, so long as Claire has, talks to our school, talks to people at the Bagnoli, nurses there, we'll know what's going on. It doesn't necessarily have to be access through Maven. We'll know.
Kathy?
Yes, thank you. So, again, I point back to the fact that when this first began two meetings ago, the information presented wasn't in my packet. That content I read in advance in the meeting, the second meeting that followed it, another amount of information was presented that I wasn't clear on why it was being presented or what, where it was coming from. So, I've taken time during these meetings to go and do some research, go back to the parties that are involved, ask some questions, consider all the things that are going on, consider the amount of pressure that I think everybody felt they were under at the moment, and make sure that we just hit the pause button here. I remember that we have to take care of the whole town, okay? Everyone in the town, and everybody has a right to their HIPAA privacy and we need to, we need to protect that. So, I think the Board of Health is doing an exceptional job. I think the health nurse has been working above and beyond. And I think rather than challenging them, we should be supporting them so that they know that we're behind them 100% to get this very, very difficult job done. Because right now, the numbers keep going up. It does impact the school. It also impacts the town, impacts our services. So, there's a lot of work to be done and I feel that we've got to all just go to get together on this and we may make decisions and we may have to revisit them. That just may be the way it is. We should get used to that.
Kevin?
Just making a reflection, albeit I'm the new kid on the block here, so I'm trying to learn quickly and be helpful. It sounds to me frankly like there might have been a disconnect of some sort. I'm quite certain from what I just heard and what I've read here, and by the way, I met with Deb at 3:00 this afternoon, was actually chatting with her until just before I walked across the parking lot. We were talking primarily about funding issues and some other things. We didn't get deeply into this particular issue. So I had already agreed to do an analysis for the Board of Health on where they are on the CARES Act funding, what's going on with FEMA. Is there in fact a shortfall in the money currently being paid for the extra hours for Claire? What is the cost going to be for this contract contact tracer? And where are we going to get the money for that? And then some related Board of Health budget issues. So I've got the big giant budget-ish book in the car and we'll be looking at all that. I suspect from what I hear that everybody is acting in perfect good faith. I mean, you know, nobody these days is trying to do anything except the right thing for the public. So, I'm absolutely sure everybody's trying to do the right thing. But maybe there was some kind of a misunderstanding, or maybe somebody other than people in this room in possession of certain info didn't safeguard it quite as well as should have been. I'm sort of speculating. What I can tell the board, Kathy's motion, Kathy's suggestion originally was to ask that I work with council to kind of look into all this and come back to the board with some sort of a report. I don't honestly know if I need access to council. I'm always very loathe to spend the public's money on Town Council. That bill can run up awful quick, particularly when sometimes that stuff is mostly common sense. So if it pleased the board, I'm already going to be trying to be helpful to Deb and the Board of Health. Why don't I just fold into that, whatever is happening with this additional issue, the contract, contact tracer, and report back to you as fast as I can. I'm not going to wait two weeks. I'll send it out in memo form attached to an email. It may come from me, it may come from Catherine, but it'll come back to you as fast as I can piece it together. And again, I really would caution everyone. I'm quite certain, nobody's done anything wrong. People are trying to be helpful, and goodness knows with COVID, there's lots and lots of room for mistakes to be made and things to happen out of nothing but good faith. It's just, it's just so much we're learning as we're on the fly as we're trying to deal with this. And I'm just betting dollars to donuts that, you know, everybody's trying to do the right thing. And perhaps it was a problem, maybe there wasn't, but I'll certainly report back to you, if that's okay.
That works for me. Okay, so I think that's enough on COVID discussion, unless you guys have anything else you want to add.
Oh, we're working on protocols for the Town Hall and as far as meetings coming here, we're going to start doing temperature checks next time. And protocols for all the buildings too, is to, if someone ends up, you know, like say you had, you know, tested positive or something.
Why's it got to be me?
Because you're the chair.
Okay. I'll take it.
You're today's Ben Carson.
What? What'd you say?
So we would have a protocol in place of who would be contacted and just, we don't have anything. So we just want to have something in place for everybody in the Town Hall too.
A standard?
Yeah.
Okay, that works too.
And for everybody, the PD, the highway town people, everybody.
All-town employees.
All-town employees.
We've had two exposures in the last couple of weeks. One at Town Hall, as y'all know, we discussed it earlier, and one elsewhere. And what I discovered in trying to learn about what to do with that employee, what to have them do when they have them come back, that was the, for me, that was a part of the meeting I wanted to have today. Deb had some other issues, so we explored both. But what I discovered was that different departments are doing different things. And we can't do that. We have to have one consistent policy with what do you do with an employee who had a potential exposure? What do you do with an employee who tested, an employee who tested positive? How do you do all that? So, I called three towns that have policies in that regard and offered to share those with the Board of Health next Monday, I think it is.
Correct.
And assist the board with developing a policy for personnel. This, I mean, it's personnel, but it would also cover appointed and elected board and committee members. Because technically under the law, remember, you folks are actually employees, as are all other board committee members. So it would be for all employees. Board of Health can take those policies and I'll do whatever work is required to help them promulgate a policy that would affect all-town employees for when they've been, you know, had exposure.
Okay, so for next meeting, you'll have that, I guess.
We're going to actually try to work it up, so we'll have, yeah, we should.
So we can have it distributed to all the buildings and so everyone knows what the standard would be?
Yes.
Okay.
We're going to try to get that in place by then, yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Good?
That's it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Quick, Mr. Chair?
Yeah?
Just to, hey, we did early on have a town-wide policy for mask wearing, which, as you drove around town, was somewhat adhered to, mostly dismissed. Rules and regulations without consequences are requests. Are we going to come up with a list of consequences for figure to adhere to public guidelines or town policies? Besides just going, oh, well, that's just Joe, you know, or that's just Julie. What are you going to do?
Well, I would say this to you. I will get the policy, Catherine, please, the board's policy. I'm planning to have a department head meeting sometime soon. We talked about that when you were interviewing me and sounded like you were happy with that idea. And I know the department heads are happy about it. And I will re-promulgate, remind all the department heads, this is the policy of the Board of Selectmen. Now, with respect to setting a policy like that, you have full authority, vis-à-vis the general bylaw, that, it's called the Personnel Bylaw, I forget the chapter. But it's very clear that Town Meeting has given you the authority to pass policies that affect all-town employees. I led it this weekend. Crystal clear. So you pass such a policy pursuant to the general bylaw, it is therefore binding on everyone. So I will take the good faith approach before we start chatting about penalties. I will remind the department heads that this is the policy, that the board expects compliance and I would prefer to not have to have the conversation with the board about what the penalties are. But if I observe, or you observe, or we get complaints from the public that the policy is not being respected, then you betcha. I'll come right back to you with suggestions for penalties. Because to the extent it's not, any policy of the Board of Selectmen isn't followed, it's a disciplinary issue.
And from my understanding, we can make the rules more stringent than the governor's executive orders, but we cannot make them less stringent.
Can't, you cannot contravene the governor's orders. And remember, there's a difference between the governor's advisory orders and the governor's mandates. He publishes them in two forms.
Through executive order.
Right. You have the authority to make policy with respect to how employees act.
Thank you.
Board of Health has authority to make policy with respect to COVID in particular. So, anything you do, really, we should be doing it in cooperation with the Board of Health so that you don't get in the pickle or you do something that they don't support or vice versa. I don't think that's going to happen, but it's just something to worry about.
Agreed.
Respectfully, Bill, what I would say to you is, before we talk about setting penalties, let's just make sure that everybody understands what the policy is. Because frankly, when I've asked, I've gotten mixed answers.
I'm a much more positive reinforcement kind of person, believe me. But there are people, you know...
I'm not sure all your department heads are aware of the board's policy. So I'll make sure they are and then...
And the governor's executive orders.
All right, let's move on to the memo pertaining to finance, department teams and hours. So Kevin, that's over to you.
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I gave you a memo. You asked me to take a look at where we are with the Finance Director's salary account and the sta- and the stipends. And Mike, you and I conducted a meeting with the concerned staff. Jason was here to see the town accountant for some other things, so he sat in on the meeting as well. And basically, you've got three stipends going on right now that you've authorized with the staff, seven extra hours for the town accountant, $300 a week stipend, and $350 for the collector treasurer. You also have authorized Catherine to do 16 hours a week in a non-meeting week and 19 in a meeting week. I took the $55 an hour that you've contracted with me for. Catherine, Caitlin, and Ellen all collaborated on a spreadsheet, which was very helpful, and computed what the current balance is in that salary budget through the payment to.
December 31st?
Yes, to, I forgot the first name, Dimbowski.
Denise.
Denise, thank you. Trying to learn all these new names. To Denise. And Denise terminated, she told me that her last day was a week ago Friday. So we took all that, netted it into what was left in the budget, and then we had a discussion with people. And the net of that has led to this recommendation. And this recommendation is as follows, and the reasons why. First, that the assistant treasurer collector stipend at $350 a week be continued through December 31st, 2020. Reason for that is she is doing extra work. I don't see reasonably, given everything else that's going on right now, that we will be finished passing the baton 100% to me assuming some of those duties. And some of those duties, frankly, I'm going to come back to you and probably recommend that you keep as we kind of transition to her becoming the treasurer and you folks replacing the finance director position with more of an administrative traditional TA. So I'm kind of trying to pursue two tracks at the same time. I know you haven't made that decision, but it seems like you're drifting that way and your committee, your governance committee is drifting that way. So assuming that's the case, there's duties that the assistant treasurer will keep. So first recommendation is if you keep that through December 31st, that's going to give me time to do more full assessment and come back to you. Second, that the town accountant stipend at $300 a week also be continued through December 31st. Now, in her case, we've got a little bit of clarity. She's got certain specific duties that she picked up that have already been transferred to me. CARES Act funding applications, capital budget, operating budget, and all that's now in my plate. So she feels very strongly that the other additional compensation she was getting, seven hours a week, that that be terminated immediately. So that, we actually have done so, but you will hopefully give approval to that as of tonight. So her seven hours a week be terminated effective last Friday, but the $300 stipend be continued through December 31st. Third, or fourth, whatever number it is, I'm on, is that Catherine's hours be 19 hours a week permanently, not 16 and 19, but just 19. I would tell you candidly that, you know, I'm 19 hours, she's 19 hours. You had asked me to be very honest if I thought my working 19 was not enough. I think it might be, but I'm not sure that the combination of 16 and 19 is enough. Well, let me say that again. I'm absolutely sure that the combination of 16 and 19 is not enough. We have to work a certain number of hours where our schedules overlap, there's no choice because we've got to do a lot of coordinating. That means if we were to work the same 19 hours, and there would be approximately 20 to 25 hours when the offices, the buildings open, well, it's not open, but it's available, but there's nobody there to answer phones, receive complaints, whatever. And the chief executive officer of the town, the chief executive office, the Board of Selectmen, you know, we can't operate like that. I mean, you need, when the building's open, you need a presence, whether it's me or administrative assistant. I would like to reserve the right to come back to you at a later date pending budget review and make a recommendation to you on what the proper staffing is. But I can absolutely assure you that right now Catherine needs to be 19 hours a week, not 16, because there's just not enough hours to get everything done. And I, you know, I've mentioned this to you before, but it's already the case, she's doing extra hours. So am I. You can do it with me, but Catherine's a non-exempt employee, meaning she's covered by the Fair Labor Standards Act. And if an employer wittingly has an employee work on a non-compensated basis, you are setting yourself up for a claim. And lest you think these claims don't happen, I will assure you, I've been in communities where they have happened. And they're, after they've waged an hour division or the U.S. Department of Labor gets done with the singular complaint from an employee, then they audit every employee. Google West Bridgewater for a great example of what happens. So we don't want that to happen. So that's my fourth recommendation, and I think that's everything. If you do all those actions, then there will still be a surplus in the finance director's salary account of, on June 30, 2021, of approximately $5,000. Now, we may end up having good purpose for that $5,000, but at the current time, I cannot yet give you a recommendation about that. I could just tell you that if you do as I've recommended in here, you're still going to have a surplus in that line, in that salary line. And I'm happy to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman.
And that's to the end of the fiscal year, right? That 5100?
That's through June 30, 21. Correct.
Got it. Ed, do you have any questions on that?
No, it sounds very reasonable to me. It was certainly articulated well on why it was needed, and I think we should support it.
Thank you.
Jason?
I agree, thank you very much.
Bill?
Very concise. When does an employee become benefit eligible?
Well, that's actually, depends which benefit. Because in the general bylaw again, you're authorized to promulgate policies. You've done that, there's a whole separate policy. I just got that this morning and just had enough time today to start scanning pieces of it. There are certain benefits that accrue to part-time employees pro rata. So for instance, a 20-hour-a-weeks employee, permanent employee, gets the same schedule of vacation benefits as a permanent full-time employee. But the part-timer, their week vacation might be 20 hours.
Instead of 44, you're sure?
So it's prorated. Normally, when someone asks me that question, what they're really talking about is health insurance, life insurance, you know, all the big dollar benefits. And that occurs at 20 hours. Now, you may have heard 30 hours, that's the standard in the Affordable Care Act.
Right, that was my point.
That is not the standard that applies to Massachusetts cities and towns. God bless the legislature, they've seen fit to give us a law, Chapter 32B, that says 20 hours is the attachment point for health insurance.
My point is if Catherine were to become benefit eligible with 19 hours a week, that would change your math because some of that would have to go to benefits.
Yes, and you notice I'm not yet prepared to make that recommendation because, for two reasons. Number one, because were I to do so, there would be a budgetary impact that I'd have to figure out before I make a recommendation, and I have not had time to do it. And secondly, very often, it is a personal policy thing, you know. I put a draft budget together, you look at it, finance committee looks at it, you folks approve it, it goes to the people, the people approve it. I don't like to make changes in that. And so, just as a matter of proper policy and respect for the public, unless it's just really dire circumstances. So changing employees' hours really is a bunch of decisions. And that's where I prefer to see that decision made. Because every budget decision increase, somebody's hours may come at the cost of decreasing somebody else's hours. So I'm not ready to do that yet. I'm not ruling out the possibility that the situation could become sufficiently concerning that I come back to you and say, we need to do more hours here or there, I think. Here's how we're going to fund it. But I'm never going to come to you and say, hey, would you increase these hours? And yeah, I don't know how the heck we're going to pay for that. So, right now, that's, everything you've seen here is all I'm prepared to recommend. And the good news is you've still got a surplus.
I do have a question. And this isn't meant to sound sarcastic or flip, it's a general question. If we're keeping Caitlin and Ellen's duties that we assigned to them during the first shovel, essentially the same until the end of the year, what are we paying you to do if they're taking on most of those duties that we were assuming was going to be your?
What, you're paying me?
Yeah.
You're paying me 55 an hour.
Right, but if the duties that we took from Denise, we reshuffled against.
Oh, the duties I took back from them?
Well, we reshuffled them to three different people, right? To Catherine, to Caitlin, and Ellen.
Yep.
We hired you.
Yep.
And then we, I thought I assumed that some of those would be pulled back from them because those would be your duties.
Yeah, in the case of Caitlin, now I understand. In the case of Caitlin, I haven't pulled those duties back 100%. Because again, I think, if I understand the Board correctly, and I hope I do, you are likely to propose a town administrator position replacing the finance director position. And I certainly think you're right in doing that, because in the short time I've been here, you've got a competent financial staff that can do the job. And no need for a finance director at this point in the town's history, you can abandon that. But you've got all kinds of administrative things that have got to get done, and you need a TA for that. So, assuming that's the case, then there are duties that Caitlin will need to learn. One today, doing the recap sheet, the recapitulation sheet, the giant form that we do online that sets the tax rate. Caitlin's never done that.
Okay.
So I said to her, okay, tell you what, I'm going to teach you how to do it. And so, come this time next year, you'll be able to do it. So there's some duties that she's still doing in there that I haven't wholly taken back because we are in that transition phase. And I, you know, to be honest with you, I can't tell you if it should be 300, 150 a week, I don't know. But for the short dollars that we're talking in the short period of time, I just don't want to recommend the change when I don't know enough to be able to do it responsibly. So that's why I made that recommendation. In the case of Ellen, she's already doing quite a bit. Now, I've taken back a lot from her, but I'm going to be leaning on her big time. The recap is a great example. We went through, I had a meeting today with all the financial officers, we went through the recapitulation sheet. And I told Ellen, you know, for purposes of this year, I'm going to have to rely on you for a lot of information that ordinarily I would keep during the year. And in order to get that form filled out, I'm going to rely on her as I start the budget. I'm going to be really leaning on her for the CARES Act stuff. She just gave me a big, a big drop of files, and I haven't even had time to read them yet. I'll be doing that soon, but I'm going to have to rely on her for a few more weeks as we do that transition. So I think in fairness, she deserves, you know, we take the seven hours back, that's what I'm taking. But we leave her with the 300 because I think it's fair. Now, you notice this says, that's as of today. I may come back to you a month from now and say, okay, transition's made, you can take these stipends away, you know, so you don't have to do them for December.
So November is the still switching, evaluating?
Yeah.
Assessing, okay. That's fine, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, because I wasn't sure that that was clear for me. Did you have something else?
Ellen, by the way, for her part, offered to have the 300 taken away immediately, in the seven hours. And I said, Ellen, I just don't think that's fair to you, because I think you're going to continue to do some of this stuff. And the fact that you hand me all the files and say, here we go, is not going to result in you not participating in this. You have to. And she said, okay. I mean, she's very loyal to you, as is Caitlin and Catherine, you've got wonderful staff, you really do. And I just, I don't want these people doing the work and not getting the money that represents the work they're doing until I'm sure they're not doing it.
I think, basically, we have seven weeks till the end of the year roughly. He's here part-time, given the time of the season we're in, where we have a couple of holidays coming up. I think it's perfectly reasonable to kind of have that transition period till the end of the year. But at the end, at the beginning of next year, I would fully expect you to have taken over the majority of those duties and make this look a little bit different.
Did Kathy have any questions on this?
Kathy, you have any questions?
Yeah, I just, I'm kind of laughing here because I was emailing with Ellen and Kevin, trying to understand why we're more than halfway through the finance director's salary line already. Because the stipends weren't that big, but then, it hit me in the face, it's Catherine's salary. It'll be initially funded, just refresh my memory, maybe Chairman Wood is another member. We had no line item in the budget for Catherine's salary. And so we did an emergency transfer of $5,000, I think?
Yes.
Denise was here. Started out?
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, that's it, okay. So my only concern, I'm trying to be the best we can right here. I thought Denise was saying we couldn't charge that salary to the finance director's salary. But even though you're doing things that she was doing, so we, this all makes sense. All these parties are doing things that Denise used to do. So this is how it's going to be. So my only concern would be that we're in balance as of the end of December. So that after the end of December, unless there's something terribly, terribly wrong, I think we need to have Kevin take it all on to stay in budget, if I'm understanding this correctly. And then, then I kind of agree with what Kevin said, that moving forward, we should be looking at next year's budget at these two salaries for these two individuals with an eye toward making an adjustment if we expect them to stay with us and be able to take on these additional duties going forward, if we move the form of government. They obviously stepped up really well right now. I mean, it's amazing what they've been able to do for us. I just don't know that we have the money to continue their stipends for the rest of the year. It doesn't look like it, right?
I would say no.
Oh, okay, so no, right, so I understood that part, right. And then again, I just totally forgot about Catherine's salary when I was in my head, trying to figure out why we were so far into the finance director's salary. Yeah, Catherine?
That's okay.
Now, it makes sense to me financially now, I get it. So I support this proposal right now. Everything's getting done, it's getting done very well, as far as I know. We definitely need to set a tax rate, that's for sure.
So I move the question that we adopt Kevin's proposals as.
We have a motion and a second, we'll roll call. Kathy?
Was it, I didn't hear the motion, was it just to approve Kevin's proposal?
Yes.
Correct.
Yes, I'm a yes on that, thank you.
Bill?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Me, yes.
Thank you.
All right, so we don't have anything on to vote to the Board. Finance Director's time, do you have anything else, Kevin?
No, I don't.
Look at you, nice.
I thought you might like that.
I do like that. So Selectmen?
I will say this one thing, I was just reflecting, I was talking to one of you. It's just that, Mike, so many things are happening. Usually when I do one of these interim positions, I go two, three weeks, you know, and I'm really kind of trying to figure out things to do, because, you know, you're the new guy and you don't know what to do. So you kind of do things. The tidal wave hit me really fast, and it's probably because of the time of year. And it's okay. I mean, honestly, I'll say it again, you get great staff. I know you know that, but I like telling you that, and I love telling it to the public who may be watching. You really have outstanding staff, have been around some of the department heads outside of the building. And I'll be seeing the ones that I haven't met yet, and all the folks in town hall, you get great staff. So it's a real pleasure working with them. You're in really, you know, really good shape financially, you're in good shape. And it's a testimony to the staff, the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, and ultimately, the people. So what I've discovered so far.
A lot of work in.
Yeah, and what I've discovered so far is that you get issues, everybody's got issues. I mean, every town's got issues, especially now. But the big things right now that I'm really. But the big things right now that I'm really, and there's a billion little things, but the big things I'm focusing on, getting the recap done and the tax rate set, because that's got to be the priority. And COVID-related issues, because, I mean, everything you talked about earlier tonight, that whacked me upside the head at 3:00. So those are the big priorities right now. But the nice thing is I'm doing it with all the really good, smart people. And what I'm finding is that, you know, it's all falling together pretty good. So it's been good work so far, I'm enjoying the heck out of it.
Great. Thank you for your efforts and your work on it. Selectment time, I just got a couple of things. We had stuff for cruiser this weekend, which I agree, I think was a good success. Chief Gillen said that they had a jam-packed cruiser filled with donations of food and socks and all kinds of things for the homeless, so that was good. And a thank you to the fire department for a couple of fires they had this weekend. I know they weren't super crazy fires, but it's always good to have the fire department responding and putting out issues in town, so thank you for that. Ed, anything on their selectman time?
Uh, no.
Jason?
No.
Bill?
Uh, yes, I'm not sure if this will be the last meeting before Thanksgiving, but if it is, I want to wish everybody out there a happy Thanksgiving. I hope they can enjoy it as best as they can, given the circumstances. I'd like to thank all the election workers that worked diligently, tirelessly, effortlessly, and honestly during the past election here in town. Beth was going to give me a list of those people that I can thank personally, but I haven't, I don't have that yet. And one last item, field permits. We have received a number of field permits for next year. Realistically, we cannot take any field permit requests at this time because the priority would be the high school, and we just don't know what their schedule is at this moment. We also don't know where we're going to be in regards to the pandemic we are currently in and what that will look like. So we appreciate the request, however, we are just unable to grant any of those at the time. So please, we'll let you know when the process is open to the general public after the high school and Bay Ruth teams are, have their schedules submitted so we know what we have left to work with. Thank you.
Kathy, anything on their selectman time?
Just a couple of things looking forward. We had, I thought we centered the list to the state DEP on the submission for that second parcel. Have you been able to find it already, did you send that in already?
Yes.
Okay, so can we just follow up and see if we're going to get any kind of a response sometimes? Or we don't ask for anything, they just assume that you're just supposed to look at it? They think it's fine, I guess we can vote it, right?
No, I signed off on that, didn't I, Catherine?
We sent it into DEP.
Right, but we voted on that, and I signed off on it and sent it to DEP, right? That was last week.
We didn't give it to the developer, so, because I thought we were waiting to see.
No, I think it goes to DEP, and then DEP decides if it goes to the developer.
I don't know about that, because this is, this is our selectmen's provisions, this is not the DEP.
Exactly what I asked.
What's that?
Exactly what I asked, Mike. Make sure we're supposed to be giving this to Bill.
And he said it goes to the DEP, right?
DEP leaves it, it's up to the DEP.
We were just talking, Kathy, Jason and I think that Mike Dempsey said that it went to DEP, and then they review it in order to then replace it to the developer.
I would, I'd be glad to follow up if you want, but I think we need to follow up because I'm not so sure that DEP is going to be the one, because it's our town conditions. These are in addition to the DEP.
I know what they are, and I know what you're talking about. I just thought that the DEP had to review those as conditions that the town is wanting to place on that site for additional consideration.
Right, I thought we wanted to review it, but I'm just wondering, should we put it on our next agenda and then should we follow up in between and see what's going on?
I'll look into that, next, do you have anything else?
Um, yeah, I was hoping that the next agenda or making sure that the budgets, I think looking at the ways to rotate the Board's Selectmen Chair based on what other towns and cities do with a five-member board. So I wanted to present some of that information at a future meeting. Not an emergency, but something that I wanted to talk about for a while.
Okay, anything else?
That's it, thank you.
All right, I don't think there's anything on their old business or other items not reasonably anticipated. So we have correspondence, Chapter 90 document from the highway superintendent, resignation letter from Officer Paul DeCoste effective November 7th, 2020, and contract return from legal for Kevin Pagos. And I think that's it, does someone want a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, meeting at 6:05 PM.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Roll call.
Kathy?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
I'm gonna say no, because I want to stay here. Thank you.
Catherine?